Sure.
Call the order.
We call the order, and we'll start with the flag, Jim, if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And if you would, with me, have a quick moment of silence for our troops that are around the world trying to keep peace. And also, for having our young man over here, Jim Edwards, back in the fold.
All right.
So if we could do that for just a moment, please. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. We will move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions and/or corrections to the minutes? If none, is there a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as they stand from the meeting on February 20th, 2024.
One second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions and/or corrections to the approval of the agenda? If not seen, none at the moment, we need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the agenda of March 19th, 2024.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Gina. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Communications. I've got a couple things, but I'm gonna wait till we get down to line here a little bit. Is there any other communications that we need to discuss? Okay?
Communications, can I talk about things that I learned in the...
Yes, please.
Okay, so I went to a road commission meeting with Joe, and we were talking about different things going on. So I guess everybody knows about the roundabout coming on Marine City Highway and Palms in 2024.
Marine City and Palms.
I know.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Just after they did all that work at the gas station there.
So you think the guys go crazy with roundabouts? They're everywhere now.
There's gonna be another one in, I think, 2025 on St. Clair Highway in Wallace.
Really?
Yeah.
Isn't there already one that's a division of a lot of them?
Division of a lot of them, right?
Yep.
And then there's one on...
I hope they take into consideration all the gravel trains that go through 26 and Palms and making that thing wide enough to get a gravel train through.
I know people were complaining about that.
I mean, you got a lot of trucks that go up and down 26 to get to St. Clair.
Nope, they're not happening.
St. Clair aggregates and trying to get through there with them.
I think they do design it for those trucks that go over the curb and ride that cement center like that. That's the reason why they designed that curb so well and not so high banked like in...
That's what they were talking about.
Yeah.
But nevertheless...
Especially on the double train.
But nevertheless, they start to really slow down.
Yeah, exactly. It's definitely had more congestion than Marine City Highway during the rush hour.
Yeah. And there's a plan for a center turn lane at Beatty on Marine City Highway. And there's a plan for a center turn lane at Church Road and Marine City Highway.
Which will go out there.
Yeah.
So how long until they just carry it all the way through?
Okay, the one on Beatty is 2024, so that'll be this year sometime. The other one is on Church Road, 2025. And also, we learned, actually Joe rather, if you can visualize Greshit, it's Casco Township where the Speedway gas station is. Right next door, there's gonna be a driveway put in. There's some townhouses going up.
Isn't that, is that Richmond or is that still considered Casco?
That's Casco. The driveway.
The driveway?
Is Casco.
Well, here's a question.
And then it goes into a...
That old party store across street from the Speedway, is that where the apartment complexes behind it? I guess you, is that part of Casco there?
Yes.
That ice rink that's sitting in the rubble garbage?
Yes.
Is there anything we can do about that to get that cleaned up?
We've been trying.
Because that is just disgusting.
We've been trying, yeah.
It looks like ice rink. It looks like it's going to break into our community.
The whole thing is an ice rink.
Yeah.
Well, what you're talking about is on the other, the west side of Greshit.
That's to the gas station. Yes.
North and south of the gas station. Okay, so north of the gas station.
They already have a stone driveway there. What they've been doing, all kinds of stuff back there already. You can see them putting in drains and stuff back there.
No, I think you're talking to the ice rink there. Is that what it is? Yeah, a little bit further north of the... She's just talking about just north of the gas station.
Just north of the gas station. And it's only, the driveway's only gonna be in Casco. The townhouses are gonna be in Richmond.
So it's a bad fire.
So that's gonna be, that whole intersection is so crazy. And that's gonna be another driveway.
I didn't realize that. I guess I'd have to look. Yeah, I guess you look at that match right there. Well, I wouldn't be surprised if you see a bucket of oil in there, not be there any longer.
A lot of people were...
In the near future, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people were talking that, you know, why is that necessary, but...
That's right. That kid on the motorcycle died last year, two years ago.
Yeah, there were a few accidents, quite a few accidents there. So that's what I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, good. It's a good update, man.
And then I was at a meeting, dinner meeting, with the St. Clair County, again Township Association, but this was the northern, I'm sorry, the southern St. Clair County Townships. We were at the meeting, and they're talking about the state taking over the ZOR and all the energy, the windmills and all that kind of stuff. So I have a petition here that I was given, if anybody wants to sign it, some people already did, to try and...
It'll go on the ballot. With enough signatures coming, 500,000 signatures.
It's a lot.
And it will be on the ballot.
Yeah. And I have seen one going around from McColl County, which I was kinda surprised. So, yeah. And this is supposed to be St. Clair County here. I better write that down. So if anybody else wants to sign it, you're welcome to. What?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're all gonna be affected by this. Maybe Steve, we're gonna talk a little bit about that a little more in our five-year plan.
I might have that here.
But that's great information, and I've got a couple of things too that I wanna run by you folks, so. Good, Gina.
That's it.
Okay.
All I got.
All righty, thank you. Okay, discussion from the floor. If we have residents here tonight that would like to approach the planning commission with some topic about the township, please step up. You're okay back there, Sean?
Nah, I don't get it.
You wanna talk about the weather or anything? Oh, we're okay? Thank you very much. Actually, number seven, we don't have any old business this evening. And we will jump to number eight, our new business, which is the election of planning commission officers. So just so that you know, I will be retiring at the end of the year. So my last planning commission meeting will be the December meeting. So just so that you know.
We'll have to have a big part.
Yeah, we need to do that. We'll have to see if Joe will sponsor that, and we'll go from there.
You better put a donation bin out front.
There we go. So I need a motion to open, I need a motion to open the election of planning commission officers.
I'll make a motion to open the election of the planning commission officers for 2024.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We will start with the chairperson. And do we have any nominations for the chairperson? Now you still wanted to do it until you retire. I, yeah, I can, sure. But, you know, if, let me just say, you know, and Steve will back me up on this. I mean, there is a real interesting area of the world that you're in, a planning commission. You get to see so many things, you know, Gina, I'm not right here. I mean, you see what, how this machine works. And, you know, Brenda is back at the office trying to make the whole thing run smooth, and she does a great job at that. But there's a lot connected to it, a whole bunch of stuff. And it's a great learning experience, so I encourage all of you to think about it.
I don't think there's not one of your co-commissioners who would step up and do a job just as well as you have done it. I don't think there's not one person sitting at that table that couldn't...
Well, we could kind of learn.
I'm sure they will.
If you do choose someone, they can perhaps sit by your side in some of these meetings that we have aside from what you do at the table and work with us on those types of things. But any one of you have the quality that...
I nominate John.
Thank you, Gina.
I'll second that. I'm still new. I don't know much yet. I'm still trying to get my feet wet.
You're doing well. You're doing well. There's a motion and then a second to nominate John as our chair.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? If not, we need a motion, we have the motion. We need to move forward and have John as our candidate. So that will work, okay? The next will be the vice chairman.
Jim, how, correct?
Pardon me?
Yes. You vote.
Oh, we got, yeah, I'm sorry.
For John.
We need to vote for John. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you, John. Okay, now we're gonna go to the vice president by gully. Our vice chairperson, Jim?
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, with all the medical questions going on, whether I would, you know, be that person to understand. It might be an unfold or whatever.
I hear you.
I'll take, I'll have responsibility.
Great, Mike. We need a motion to put Mike...
I can work under Jim. He can teach me what he knows.
I'm not even ready, Mike.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. For secretary. Dan, what are you doing over there?
Just doing secretary.
Can you handle another term?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I have some questions as far as like the fact that delivery and that kind of stuff. Like, is that something that you guys are...
Yeah, work it out.
Yeah, we've got a couple ideas that we wanted to run by you.
Yeah.
You know, that we get things organized and ready to roll, you know, before we get into a crunch factor. So I'll get with you on that, and, you know, after we get done with the meeting tonight. And what I'd like to do is discuss it with our new chairperson and also with Brenda.
Yeah, I know with the nature of things, and people don't always have their stuff ready to go. And so they're on the agenda, they're off the agenda. And so getting their agenda out and work packets out in the timely manner to the commission can be a pain in the butt. And, you know, I don't, this is my, this is my computer right here. So in the past, before Christine was here doing the minutes, you know, this is where I was typing all this stuff out. So I don't have a computer at home. I use my phone. So all that kind of stuff is a little bit of a learning curve for me.
Sure.
But I think that, you know...
And we, I think we've got some ideas, and Brenda and I have kicked around a few things that'll take some of the mystery out of it, you know, if we will. So you're okay with that?
Sure.
Is there a motion for Dan?
I'll nominate, I'll make a motion to nominate Dan for the secretary position.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thanks, Dan. Representative to the ZBA. We need someone for the ZBA.
Who is the representative now?
This is Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry was...
It doesn't happen now.
Every month, every three months, January, April, July, and October. Unless someone petitions for a variance or special land use, then a special meeting might be called. But we try to schedule it so that it falls at the every three-month meeting. So they're meeting the 11th of April, and then they'll meet again the 11th of July.
And that person's responsibility is to attend that meeting?
Like Gina, is for the board.
Report for the findings to us.
Yeah, that's it, exactly.
If anyone wants, I don't know, I'll do it, sir. That'd be great if you could. Yeah, that's fine. Good, thanks, Jim.
Okay, Jim, instead he would help us out here, say motion?
I'll make a motion and I'll nominate him.
And second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. Okay, we have, we can do this by what they call acclamation. And basically, what can we...
Do we, we don't have to nominate the representative to the board, the position that Gina holds? That's not a, no?
No, the board does that.
I got you. Carry.
Yeah. The, yeah, let's look, yeah, we'll let that vote, huh?
Clear enough.
Yeah. Here's what we can do. Since we have one person for each of the vacancies, we can get a motion from the floor for acclamation. And basically, what that means is, you're staying one person that you're going for for each of them. One vote, and we would put all four into office. So if I can get a motion to have this vote by acclamation...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second that.
There's a second. Chris, does that make sense to you?
It does.
There's a motion and a second to have the vote for our election of planning commission officers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And now if you would vote for the four, please. All those in favor of our four nominees, please say yes.
Yes.
That should do it, folks. I had enough motions here, Chris, to, they can't say anything on this one.
Must cover it all.
I got all, I got, yeah.
Now we gotta make a motion to close the meeting?
We have to make a motion now to close the elections.
I make a motion to close the elections.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second to close the elections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Thanks, folks. I appreciate you helping me through that. Planner's report. Steve, anything right now?
No, we're for the master plan.
Okay, thank you. One thing, you know, Steve, I was, one thing I wanted to bring up here, that the increased length of submission from the township board. Gina, I know that's in process, correct? We're going from 15 to 30 days.
That will be on the, the resolution will be adopted. It's anticipated at the April meeting. The planner's office is taking care of the publication language and the actual publication in the paper. It becomes effective out of publication. So as soon as it's published in the paper, it becomes effective. So hopefully, we're hoping April, it becomes effective. That as well as your hoop building amendment as well, those two, both of those.
Right. And those are the type of things that we just wanna, you know, Gina, just keep in front of us.
Right.
Because quite frankly, we just kind of distract a little.
Right, that's true.
Sometimes things go out of here, and, you know, Brenda's trying to keep a lid on it. You're trying to keep a lid on it, but just if we could bring it up, that would be great. Okay, all righty. Report from committees. Anything from the committees? One of the things, Steve, I was gonna just bring up and get your input on. We received a letter from the Oakland County Road Commission about the right-of-ways.
There's something in your packet from St. Clair County about the five-year plan, but I don't recover anything from Oakland County unless it would have come through your...
Wait, look, St. Clair County, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's something in your package.
There is.
Oh, this is, actually, we did talk a little bit about this at the last meeting, and I saw a little border. The, they had mentioned about our master plan updates and also about Steve, the right-of-way lines with the county. And they must be experiencing some issues. We've been trying to catch that here. And I asked Brenda to maybe we would actually put a letter in our packet of information to the petitioners. You know, Brenda, when they come in to get their package for site plan review, whatever it may be, we were gonna ask you, Steve, that that might be a good idea, to put a letter with it.
That's for the designated right-of-ways?
Exactly.
Mr. McNiff, I think he may have spoken to Karen. I gave her his information. I guess he's had some problems with other municipalities who aren't taking the road commission's designation in mind. And then the people do what they're gonna do, and Mr. McNiff comes along and says, "You're in our right-of-way." And they didn't know it, so...
It's typical that we reflect the proposed right-of-way in the master plan so that residents and developers are aware that they have to abide by that.
Yeah.
And that should be a matter of practice then from the planning commission, that we make sure they're abiding by the right-of-way. There's some legal problems, however. But that's not our jurisdiction. It's the road commission that needs to deal with it. For example, if you're gonna require somebody to set back another 30 or 40 feet because someday the road commission may buy right-of-way, that's a taking. And the road commission doesn't want to pay for that property. So there's some legal issues there, but as far as we're concerned, the road commission does have jurisdiction. So we need to abide by that.
Okay, so is that ideal, what we're talking about, a letter or...
It should be part of our packet, yeah, our site plan review.
Part of our packet somehow?
Right.
Okay. Should we maybe have you or Karen put some language together?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And then we'll just insert it right into the application packets for when they wanna approach the planning commission.
Right. And I think that would help. I've only got caught once on that, folks, where we were actually down the road on a site plan. You probably have too, Steve. Where they, using the old right-of-way, you know, once the county comes in, it says, "Oh, by the way, your right-of-way as well." And in our, yeah, in our zoning book, we have the right-of-ways designated, like my street, Church Road, they're all there. But probably, they're probably not right.
Well, there's an existing right-of-way, and then there's the proposed right-of-way, which is typically 120 for every road in my roads. And the road commission, if they've adopted the 120, they want us to make sure that our setbacks are from that 120 and not from the existing right-of-way.
Okay. So you, yeah, this might be better coming from you.
You can do it. Sure, we'll put it on. We'll work with Brenda and Evan in the application.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, guys, details? All right, moving on. I still don't have my glasses, so if you see me throwing these things, I don't know, just disappear with me a little bit.
You'll have to share your story with Mr. Edwards.
Yeah, yeah, I did a little bit, but I haven't cried out loud enough yet. I'm going to before the night's over.
They're trying to want off each other, you know?
That's what happens when you get off. You gotta find somebody that'll listen.
So that it here.
It is a very big problem, I'll tell you. Okay, anything else from committee reports or planners' report, or we're gonna move on? Okay, let's go into session two, our master plan five-year update. And Steve, you should maybe take over here.
Sure. I think last time we talked very briefly about, we wanted tonight to start dwelling in on the future land use plan, the future land use map. And that's what you see in front on the podium there, which is basically how you expect land to be used 20 years in the future. Where, what we think development would be like then, what would the need be at that time? And, you know, and we would, in an ideal situation, our rezonings or our zonings would be based on the master plan. For example, somewhere in the middle, they yellow, if somebody came in and wanted to rezone to a commercial, we probably wouldn't approve it. But if they came in a commercial, they were in that Greshit corridor between St. Clair Highway and Fredmore, yeah, we probably would approve it because that's what the master plan shows. But we also gotta make sure that our master plan, the future land use plan, is reasonable. Or we're not gonna be able to hold up in court on some of these things. So I think that's why we're here tonight, basically, to look at some of our uses, particularly along County Line Road and Marine City Highway. I think that's the ones that we have to dwell in under. Everybody that know will send a copy of the master plan map or the future land. So anybody don't have one, I have a couple extras. You good? You want one? You need one? So... What I'm really talking about, and I'm sorry...
You want me to hold it for you?
No, I'm good. I want to give a point here.
Oh, all right.
Couple things we need to discuss. First is the industrial corridor. Our industrial corridor goes from County Line Road to Melbourne. For the first two miles, we have a half-mile deep of our industrial, and we cut down to approximately a quarter of a mile. It mimics almost identically what's happening down in Niagara Township. Theirs goes from Melbourne to County Line. Theirs is a half-mile deep right here. It's up to about here, and it's shortness to a quarter mile. Their proposed master plan, however, their newest master plan, looks to probably increase that or at least consider increasing it to the half-mile down.
All the way across?
To Melbourne. I don't know if that's gonna be passed or not, but that's, but they also have industrial along this stretch. So our first thought is, do we keep this the way it is? Or do we wish to maybe increase a little bit here if the demand ever? I mean, it gets some pushback from residents, but this is, you know, this would be open to public hearing, so we'd be able to get their input. So I need to propose, I'm gonna need to propose some kind of future land use map for a public hearing, and I'd kind of like to know your thoughts of how you would like this start, or you, we'll start with that, or you'd like this to go.
You're talking about 20 years.
20 years down the road.
Let me ask you this, in your opinion, would it be better to go deeper in a shorter area? Or would it be better to keep it narrower and extend maybe to the next mile or a half?
Personal opinion, I think it's better to be deeper than to extend.
Wouldn't most developers want the frontage in 26, though?
They would, but the large developments that you could get would be large parcels that could combine and have all of them, yeah.
Interested to know how many of those are vacant, like vacant parcels right now?
We can, well, hey, you have an existing land, just come for you too. Just kinda, so, I mean, that's the first thing.
That's interesting, because I know some of the parcels, like the, like those ones along Church, just to the north of Marine City Highway, those are all residential parcels right now, but they're zoned, they would be rezoned to...
Only if they wanted, we would rezone them.
But if that person came and said, "Hey, I live here, but I wanna rezone my parcel, and it's in your future land use," they could do that?
Yes. I gotta tell you what happened over here. You may already have heard. I recount, Shartier went to rezone this... In Ira Township, Shartier went to rezone this half-mile, a little further down here, quarter-mile. The township board approved it, planning commission approved it, St. Clair County approved it. The residents went, just got enough signatures and a petition, and went to a vote of the people. And the last election, two months, a month ago, it was overturned. So the property was rezoned back to agriculture.
Agriculture.
Mm-hmm. So there is this movement to...
I don't think they're not happy.
Yeah. Nothing was prepared as a developer to come back again.
Right, right.
So that looks like Marine City Highway to Melton, there's two houses on Melton. There's a D or already, uh, general business.
On Melton?
On Melton.
Unless those people own the front from 26 all the way back, how are you gonna hit those spots?
You'd have to combine properties.
Yeah.
'Cause those, the, the first half-mile, they run north and south deep. But once you get to, let's call it Church and a Half, heading east, then the parcels change direction, and the, the frontage is actually off of Melton Road, a half-mile deep that way. So if you were to, or try to do something deep, you'd have to, you'd, you'd impact four or five parcels versus...
I think, but this parcel here is a house.
Oh, that's where.
And then this one here is also a house. This is empty field, and you have like, we're being accustomed to, do you see that?
You had ours back this one more. You had ours west, west of here.
It's like, you ever say nothing? Hessen, that one property's, one giant property right next to Hessen. Off this blurry map, I can't really...
You can go, you can go up there and talk to this guy.
If you were to go, you'd affect less people.
You'd have a, like, drop the same shot.
Right there.
That's all one parcel. But on Church. And just came to Hessen, rather than chew up all these, you know, those houses or something.
Well, it makes it harder for a developer, because now you have to, you have to get four or five people that are stacked on top of each other to watch it.
And you're not on a bridge avenue, you're on a dirt road, you know, you're more traffic there. More traffic, you're gonna have to turn left on Marine City Highway to cause more accidents.
Correct.
That's already roadfront, I mean, just if that is all one parcel to Hessen, I mean, that's a, whoever parcel that is, even if they took a third of it to match it even.
And, and the other thing you'd have to consider, though, with this map, I don't know how these waterways that are shown on the map would, would impact that, but that whole corner, that parcel's probably pretty unusable if that's truly as much of a creek that's going, or a river that's going through there, that, that corner of Hessen.
You'd probably use about half of it, but you'd have to access it off of 26.
Right.
Steve, what is it, the value of the property as it is right now? And with the future land use considering, taking that line straight through, what is it, what does, what does it do to the value of the property?
Probably has the potential to be sold for a little higher property, but it, it won't change your system. Assessors don't look at the master plan at all for value. But if I were sitting here and I owned this property and I was trying to sell, I could certainly use that as leverage, just say, "Hey, the master plan is industrial, so you should be able to get an industrial zone in, so my price is a little higher."
So if they're sitting, the house is sitting right there, like I Church Road right there, along that little, little quarter section, nothing really happens to them. They, they, they can be industrial all they want to, but they can just leave it the same, no big deal.
The zoning still says agriculture, single thing?
Yeah.
You're just saying that you anticipate that someday this corridor, to assert the debt, may be industrial.
So I don't see why the residents there would have, if they live on, right? Unless they don't want industrial at all.
And you're not zoning.
If anything, as, as it continues to develop, then your property now, like, like Keith just mentioned, and Steve, now your, your property is more valuable if you were to sell it as a bulldoze. But I, I mean, I know for a fact that one guy that lives there, he ain't ever moving. I mean, Andy on the, on the corner, man, that guy's got so much stuff, he, he'll die now, so.
Well, I just, I, I get a concern that our, you know, our infrastructure in that part of the world is margin of investment. You want water, you have to go across to Ira to get it.
That's, yeah.
If you want storm water, you are going to build a detention or retention pond. There's a lot of ramifications of changing that zone. And if, uh, traffic-wise, uh, I don't know, I, I just, I have limitations about it.
I mean, I, I think, Keith, you bring up another good point, though. I mean, if we continue, if we were to bump that half-mile depth to a, or that quarter-mile depth to a half-mile depth, now all of those utilities that any potential developer would, would need have to go that much further north of 26. Whereas if you left it at a quarter-mile and went to Hessen, now all those parcels are a lot closer to 26 where that water's at, where the storm drains are at, you know? It, it seems like it'd be easier if we wanna, you know, as, as a township, you know, we wanna promote... Yeah. I mean, I gotta imagine, at some point with the 26-mile-old corridor, we're not always gonna be in a position where every parcel needs a retention or detention pond either, maybe because that's gonna become not very feasible. And say, twenty years, if you wanted to put a strip mall in there, how do you build a strip mall? And you gotta, a retention pond taking up, you know, a third of your property.
And I don't know what, the last time I checked, it was like fourteen thousand for water across 26 mile road or something like that.
Yeah, it's, it cost us about twelve grand when we did it. It was about twelve.
Like, like I Greshit, that's seventy-five thousand.
To get, to get the water from that side?
Yeah.
Did you get the water from that side?
Yeah.
So I guess you're talking about three options, and you're talking of this option right here. You could go and make that right there industrial, okay? Or you could not put that in and go this way, something like that, and make that industrial. The option two, or the third option is to leave it as it is for the next five years and revisit it then.
Oh, for five years. Why can't we do both?
You can do that and that, sure, absolutely.
We're gonna let it sit for five years and not touch it, see what happens.
And what did you say, Ira, in, in relation to what you did, Drew?
Right here.
That's what they're proposing right now?
Right.
It's up to that one corner section.
This wouldn't be set in stone, but we'd kinda like at least a straw vote, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, so that we can just propose it and let the residents, in a public hearing, provide input.
What would you suggest?
I got a quick question. Back towards County Line there, right on the corner of Tony, Marine City Highway, County Line, you have general commercial, then right next to that is, the green there is recreation. Isn't that the parcel that's called?
Oh, isn't that the?
Or Consumers?
That land?
That's the trees.
The dark.
That's the trees, yeah.
Yeah, there is a stand of white, is it?
I forget, it's a...
Birch trees or something?
It's, it's something very...
Yeah, so that one would be touched.
And that probably would be added, taken out of the guy, I think, to make that one.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna change it, I'm just trying to visualize what's, what's there. So the Consumers piece must be the next one over, that first one that runs, purple, yeah, the, the south purple, that must all be Consumers right there.
What is this? I didn't know, what is this?
It must just, I think it's just wooden, vacant wooden land, but it's, it's called out as recreation.
Is it protected or is it protected?
It's protected.
It is protected.
So it's conservationism?
Oh, gotcha.
Is that like wet or something?
White, probably. I know it has a lot of birch trees in it.
Well, it's service, that's a whole other thought. Well, what I've heard through all the meetings I've attended, and whether it be the corridor here or wherever, that the folks do not want us change antizoning to industrial, that type of thing, until we really have need for it.
I'd say we pocket it for five years and not back there, then.
That might be something.
'Cause all that land's, I think, bought now.
No, exactly. Why mess with it now? Piss off the residents.
Right. Well, yeah, you know, but that's what we're here for, though, Mike, you know, it's, how do you want, how do you envision the growth of the township? All right, I mean, that corridor, we all know, is gonna go leaps and bounds.
Oh, it's gonna skyrocket. There's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah, right, 'cause the corridor that is gonna...
You just wanna contain it to that area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think it'll slow it.
Mine, I, I mean, I...
It'd be nice to find out what the residents actually think right there.
Yeah.
It would be, it's, it's...
I mean, I'm proud of that. I think, I mean, I, from, from what I've heard from most of the residents is they wanna keep it as close to 26 as possible, and that's why, if, if we're gonna do anything in the first five years, I think it might be premature, like you're talking about, Mike, because I think we'd be able to make a better decision based on what we see the county do with the road, with 26 mile road in the next five years, that a lot of things are gonna change. And then we can say, "All right, now the road supports additional..."
Industrial use.
"...development, and, and so now we gotta look at, what else do we want along this, this stretch of roadway?"
That's true, we gotta look at the road, right?
Exactly, that's why I say we pocket it for five years, see what develops and what happens with the main thoroughbred down there, and we can decide then.
It's not like there's...
If you change it now, then it's gonna piss a lot of, like, even the residents upset or something.
It's not like there's not vacant land in that area that, that can still be developed. If we were totally maxed out and every parcel was, was sold and developed, then we need to, you know, we need to, we would need to talk about it. But for right now, I don't think we're at that point yet.
I just, I just, you know, where it's blue right there, it comes up to the ninety-four, yeah. I think that ought to be commercial.
We're gonna get, that was right next. Yeah, let's finish industrial, then I'm, that's going there, ask.
Okay.
Well, I think, I agree.
So we're, we're agreeing to keep it as it is for now?
I would, yeah, I think so.
I do, too.
Because they're, they're not sure, they, being the county.
Yeah, exactly.
How they're gonna handle that intersection. I mean, and all of you, and I use it a lot, we all do, we all do, and that is one dangerous, in my opinion, intersection, it's gonna get nothing but worse. Where, how they're going to remedy that, I, I think John has captured something there from the standpoint of the northeast quadrant off of the intersection. I'm trying to remember the guy's name who owns that. But, you know, some folks are even talking about a, a roundabout of some sort.
I can see why they're going in there.
And so it's, there's, there's a lot of questions there, folks, just to collage. So Steve would like some kind of a straw vote, what do you, what do you think, just like a one vote?
I believe it.
Even as it is for five?
Even as it is, okay, perfect, all right.
What we...
This area here, I've had a problem with this since we had that rezoning come through. It would be very difficult to uphold in court that we're keeping forty or fifty acres for office, when there's no demand for office in the area. So, and that's what would happen, we, we would have been denied that rezoning and say, "No, we wanna stick to our master plan, which is office service, which is non-existent right now."
Wasn't there a couple residential houses in that blue dotted area, and then the old farmhouse, that's...
Sure, but that's typical of master plan, you know, I mean, you always, you're, you're looking at what it will be someday after some of these sells.
Right.
My recommendation, if you're looking for a recommendation, is that we definitely do something with this. Either make it commercial, which would allow office. I don't think we need two different categories, office and commercial are pretty much the same in master plan. So we make this commercial, and then if somebody came in and wanted to put a doctor's office there, I mean, a medical office, sure, it wouldn't be a problem, but we'd have it for a commercial also. Or you limit your commercial for the time being to this corner, which is a lot, and keep this, move this all back to agriculture.
Agriculture.
But you already have a commercial parcel in there, a company operating it.
Yeah, it goes and means that it's, we, 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 you don't master plan based on...
Existing.
You rezone it, but generally, yeah.
That's a, Poncho's a B2, is that correct?
No, well, it might be ZonB2.
Or Poncho, yeah, ZonB2.
Uh...
Well, you have to, Steve, what were you telling those guys?
B2, ZonB2, a master plan's office.
Industrial.
What were you saying about the, I'm trying to remember the words you used. Between ninety-four and that B2, we can't, we can't have, what did you tell us? When we were working with the trucking company, and that was gonna have to be rezoned, correct?
They wanted, yeah, they had, because they were industrial, they wanted it.
So what are we trying?
What I said at that time was, we were gonna tell, we were gonna, if, if we had denied the rezoning, basically we're saying that the B2 is appropriate. And, but there is no demand for commercial there either, so that would've been hard, too. Plus the fact that it was in close proximity to the freeway, which typically doesn't support commercial other than highway commercial or industrial, like a gas station, that kind of thing.
So this, the top map that you gave us is the existing, correct?
Yes.
I don't know what you got, I didn't see that. Is it, you said existing land use or zoning?
That's a original, original map, yeah.
But it's different than that one that's up there, that's why I'm asking.
Can I see the chat?
Yeah.
I don't know which one you mean, yeah. Yeah, that's your zoning map. It just doesn't have the same colors, is that?
Yeah, the color.
Well...
It's faded.
No, I understand, but, oh, okay, all right, I see what you're saying. Yeah, 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 the general business. So did...
Go ahead, John.
Poncho is operating that, that, his business, and he was approved under general business?
Yes. Contractor, you're...
Oh, okay. What's it, and, and at what point does, what, what are the qualifications to go from general business to industrial?
Your audience is really a fine line.
Yeah.
It could've been called either one.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It's whether he said he's a contractor supply, it has, I mean, he's a landscaping company operating an office, and he has contractor supply out there, or he calls himself a contractor's office. It's just, okay, use of words, semantics.
Gotcha.
But at, at a minimum.
Yeah.
At a minimal, we should reflect the zoning here and make that business.
Or make it the...
Or, or go back to industrial, I mean, uh, agricultural.
That's what I thought. If it was back to A, that means they'd have to come to us under the planning commission or whatever. And, you know, we were all pulling our hair out a little bit when this trucking company come in. It was a tough scenario from the standpoint, you, you know, you, one voice says, "Yeah, it's a heck of a business to have in your, in your township," no doubt. But the traffic, the location that it was in proximity to ninety-four, Mike, was really, really tough. And that, that's what threw it for me for the most part, and you too.
Why don't we, why don't you just consider this, we'll come down here with agriculture and stop where the existing development stops, so Poncho's should make that commercial, and the rest of it would be A.
What you're saying, is leave it the way it is now?
Basically, but, but take...
I'd propose go back to agriculture there, which is what it is on the, the existing map now.
I like that idea.
I like that idea as well, yeah.
That means they have to come to us for any kind of, our building or anything like that.
Well, and, and again, here's my whole thing. Here's my whole thing with a lot of this stuff is, if there are open parcels that are already zoned for the potential use, let's fill those first rather than continuing to change additional parcels, you know what I mean, when, when we still have available ones to give us.
Yeah, but I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna run into developers that can pick up an existing parcel.
Cheaper than they can.
That's cheaper than what's already zoned for, then they try to come to us, and...
Yeah.
But of course, the meetings are about, so.
Yeah, but it gives us the opportunity to say, "Why should we rezone the parcel you want when the parcel next to it is open, available, and already zoned correctly?"
It's certainly a legitimate argument on your behalf.
Basically, the conversation that we had with the...
Exact, yeah, no, the, the trucking company.
So we're good on that one?
Yeah, I said, even as it is, yeah.
Okay. Let's come up to this right here, this is on the southwest, I mean, southeast corner of County Line and St. Clair Highway.
Oh, yeah.
We have it as office, again, I think it needs to be commercial, which allows office. I don't think we should pigeonhole anybody into just an office building there. Maybe this should be shown as red, just like this.
Well, because that was suburban residential.
Yep, but it's right next to...
Kroger.
Kroger, yeah. So, we know it wouldn't be residential one day. So, the master plan showed it as office, which to me, again, there's no demand. But if you showed it as commercial, an office could go in there.
I like that. Give opportunity for another, another good development site on a major, major corner. I'd like to see somebody develop it because maybe somebody would actually take care of all the garbage that flows out of Kroger into that lot.
That's a good idea.
Okay, we're good on that?
I don't see any reason.
Again, this is...
I think we're on target there.
Okay. Now, the only other things, we have a couple of pockets, and I think we have to leave over where the gas station is, and also, uh, there's a commercial pocket there. And then up in the Adair area, there's a commercial area, which really has to stay. That's Adair. I'll be honest, I don't know what this is. Is this part of the, no, okay, this is Adair here, excuse me. And then we have the intersection up there of the highway and, uh, which is, we, we do so some future commercial up there, which makes a lot of sense. We'd never be able to keep residential that area.
That makes sense.
Another dollar store.
Another dollar store.
I mean, if that's where we're at, I mean, yeah, oh, there is one up there.
I know there is.
I mean, you know, if we wanna promote commercial development, those are the areas we want it to happen.
Yeah.
It's less than that, then.
Now, what's the difference between general, commercial, or, and local business?
I'm taking those out. We're just gonna say commercial, industrial. I don't know why they were that technical on this. It's typically a zoning standard, not a master plan standard.
Perfect.
So, it'll be very simple. It'll say residential, high-density residential, it'll be multiple family, commercial, industrial, public service, recreation.
Steve, uh, Joe, you had a question for me, or, or, one of the things you're talking about was the property next to the park.
Next to the park?
Yeah, the park going in.
Or the, right there. What is that?
The, the property to the, was it to the east?
Yeah, the park gets up for sale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You wanted the zoning, or?
No, well, we, um, the zoning in the front part of it, like three and a half acres, is like general business. Um, the rest of it's recreational, open space. We rezoned our section, which was two acres up front, we rezoned it from general business to recreational, open space. Yeah, we did that a number of years ago. So...
Our park area.
Yeah, where our park is, exactly. Um, so, I mean, the owners are asking astronomical, we're just waiting and seeing. I mean, we're just interested in the property toward the back, or in the, it's already zoned recreational, open space.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's nothing we have to do with the, at this point?
No.
And the second question we had, or I had for you was, twenty-six mile road, the patch where the trees are, um, on the north side of the road.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth what? Twenty-sixth near County Line.
Yeah, it's, um, I think that's owned by the gas company, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, according to them.
Yeah, it's a preserve of trees, of white oak.
There we go.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I, you know, we would have to dig around for the paperwork on there, but I know that was, I think, deeded or something like that quite a few years ago.
Alright.
Yeah.
What's the, what's, on Meizner between Hessman and Palms, what's that large parcel recreational, open space?
We own that.
We own it, township as?
Township.
Right, Joe?
Yeah.
And there's about ninety-some acres there.
Ninety-eight acres.
Ninety-eight acres.
We rent that to Mr. Cockle, right?
Yeah, we rent fifty-two acres of it to a local farmer.
Okay. It was kind of a structured deal at that time, John, I believe. Right, Joe? It was a court action, was it?
Yeah, but we had, um, that property was obtained, it was due to a fish kill on the petroleum companies that was up in Trevers. Way, way back in the seventies, and property owned, there was an agreement, one of the court actions, from what I understand, is if that company owned property and they wanted to sell, they first had to offer to the local unit of government a recreational space.
Wow, I got you.
Yeah. So, we had that property, ninety-eight acres, wanted to build a park, but due to the reality of the casco township, right now, we just don't have the building. In the meantime, that other property's coming available, which was probably more easier to build as a park space. Maybe eventually, I mean, years and years from now.
Or maybe not so many.
Well, and, and the next question I was gonna have in regards to this recreational, open spaces. Now, to the east of Palms, it shows another parcel being rezoned from what it is now. Uh, agriculture to recreational.
Yeah, that's Prech Point.
That's Prech Point, then.
Yeah, to east of Palms, right on Meizner.
Yeah, but this is, I mean, I, I'm looking at that now, it's...
Question.
Oh, yeah. Aren't they right on the corner? Isn't that one parcel beyond them?
I'd have to look at it, yeah.
Do they own all the way to Palms?
Yes.
I believe so.
I think so, I think they do.
They're considering a curb, I believe they're, of Palms.
First, I mean, according to this, maybe half the parcel is water.
Yeah, it looks like it, doesn't it?
So, is that something they proposed to, to rezon their, their parcel to recreation?
You know, I don't know. I think that happened way before I was under the planning commission. Prech Point's been there.
What I'm talking about is, this is our existing. It's not that, it's not... It's not recreation there. This is our future land use, and it is recreation. So, is that, are, are they driving that, or are we up?
That was, that's just showing the use, not the zoning. Recreation's allowed in agricultural land.
I got you, okay.
Okay.
Steve, are we throwing some properties out that we can look at now, or do you want...
They were good. I got what I need.
Okay. The one that I had, and I don't know if there's anything we can do, if we should do, but again, getting back to County Line and twenty-seven mile road, we got the trailer park in close proximity, and then there's just a dead piece of property. And that's for trailer parks. You can't really put a curb cut, if you will, in my opinion, between the overpass and where the existing curb is right now for the trailer park. Is, should we be, and the property is just virtually dead right now.
You're talking about just that little triangle of space, maybe south of the trailer park?
This, this...
No, it'll be down here, that's one.
It's actually, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah.
Oh, this little triangle right there?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, basically, lots and, like, that ends a new it, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Or, if you're coming from twenty-seven, you just drive straight right into it, basically?
Yeah, car lot, yeah, Mr. Chair. I think there's two lots. There, there's like a rectangular lot that's right next to the trailer park, and then there's that triangular where's the...
Yeah, there's, 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 well, there's actually a third parcel behind the rectangle along, at the triangle. But the, the two with frontage on County Line are only the same person.
We had the real estate folks in to talk to us that one time, Joe.
Yeah.
And they were trying to do something, quite frankly. I, and I don't know, Steve, is it something that we wanna look at?
Mike, is that the word they wanted to put, trailer storage?
No, that was behind the old party store.
They were thinking about doing just...
Trailer storage was down farther where the old, where that...
Where the party store was.
Where the party store was. Yeah, and they are kind of doing that right now.
Yeah. So, this is, this would be south of that?
It's right there off of ninety-four.
When you're, when you're going down, down County Line, it's right, right after you come off the overpass.
You blink, you miss it.
Yeah.
That's how fast it goes by.
Yeah.
And it's a very small piece of property, but...
It's like a new used area that's right up on ninety-four.
Great for a personal, somebody wants to use ninety-four as, as, you know, their parking.
Yeah.
Or a great rooftop park.
So, that's, that's down County Line.
Yeah.
What do you want to show that it's a commercial?
I'm sorry?
Who may want to keep that it's a commercial?
There's a commercial.
Yeah. I don't know what else you can put there.
What is this? Is that map you're, is that map you're looking at? Um, tell me how many, how many acres that is?
Oh, gosh, probably...
Two?
Maybe two or three.
Well, no, the rectangle one is five point two six.
It's gotta be like five eight.
Wow, I think it's that big.
The triangle one is...
Look at your options. It's probably not gonna ever be single-family or agriculture.
No.
You don't want industrial there, because that's just up the whole quarter. The only other option you really have, you know, it won't be mobile home. The only other option you really have is commercial.
I would...
Four, four acres, four point zero seven.
What's the deeper there?
Yeah, you get ten, ten... I'd be open to making that commercial. Somebody wants to put a small something in there that, you know, like you said, utilizes the, the frontage of ninety-four, I mean...
Dollar store.
Dollar store.
Gina!
That's a close thousand.
I hate those!
Well, you know what I thought, whenever I look at, whenever I look at it, I, I think of a storage, uh, building.
Facility.
Facility. But the obvious issue is the curb cut to get in and out.
Yeah.
A safe, let me put it this way, a safe curb cut.
Well, it's a small piece, so you're not gonna have a lot of traffic running in there.
Yeah, but like Hugh's saying, if you're coming over, coming up ninety, or coming, coming line.
You gotta turn right there.
Yeah.
Gotta turn right there.
They, they slow down. If you're coming, something's coming over the hill right behind you, they're just gonna hit.
You already got twenty-seven already, dude, that's dangerous.
Turn eighty back.
Yeah, yes, it really is.
Commercial, with a lot, with a lot of traffic, would almost be the same as when the trucking company is driving.
Add to multiple more accidents.
You're just gonna have accidents, because people are gonna come over that bridge, and if there's a backup, you're just...
Why feel it?
You're gonna hit what's in front of you.
You'd have, I mean, it's not like a wrecking ball or a truck. You'd have to have a, a real, you'd have to have a decel lane, but your decel lanes would be very limited, because it's gonna start going up the ramp.
Yeah, you pretty much have to do it almost, like, as soon as the time's...
Joe, what do you, what do you think? If we, if we did commercial zoning, uh, it's like a dead piece of property over there?
Yeah, I don't know what you could do with it.
The only thing I could think of would be storage. But you gotta get in and out safely, near Meizner, right?
I mean, uh, just looking at the satellite photo, the guardrail runs.
Oh.
I mean, very, very close to where twenty-seven mile is.
Yeah, there, there was a farmhouse there until about twenty years ago, a rectangular piece.
You really like this, there, like a moose.
And then that was tore down back in the seventies when they're building the trailer park. They went, they developed a lot to buy it all away. Then whoever lived there just, it's all, it's all, it's all dead from.
So, Steve, if, if, if you did do a commercial, uh, what are your thoughts?
I think it would work. I mean, recognize we're not rezoning, we're just, they'd have to come in for a rezoning, and then we could provide and make sure it's a safe development.
That sound reasonable to you?
Somebody might come up with a really good idea.
Yeah.
I can tell they're sorry.
I'm surprised, I'm honest, I'm surprised the trailer park's not a trucking plant, you know, use it for storage or use it for something. I mean, that would be illogical. Apparently not.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to do something to it, they have to come to us, and then we can have a traffic conversation at that time.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other properties you can pitch up, or?
I would just put a roundabout there.
Little difference to the gym.
Alright, yeah, Mr. Chair, about the one, the southeast corner of St. Clair Highway, County Line, I get lots of calls. I must, in the past few months, I must have fielded about five or six calls where people were wanting to do something. Um, and they were expecting water or sewer service from the city of Richmond. And I said, we don't have an agreement in place for that. I was wanting, somebody was wanting to put a, a senior living community.
Oh, wow.
And now that's, you know, not zoned for that, or, that, so, and, um, but yeah, I do get a number of calls on that.
Even the corner opposite would have a lot of potential, just sitting there.
That's what Jeffy's, yeah, he owns all that up to the corner.
Oh, does he?
Yeah, he owns all that. And then next to him is the tree guy, the old man, Pumba, we call him. Who is the tree company, Ashen Tree, I think, that's his father.
Okay, any, any action, anything we should do with that, Joe?
I mean, there are certain businesses that can go in there that don't need sewer line, just they can go on well and stuff like that.
True. Especially for such a little stuff. So, we're talking about the one on St. Clair Highway.
Okay. Steve, what else?
That's all I have. I appreciate it. You're valuable input.
Awesome.
Alrighty. Steve, we, we got a memo from our friends at the planning director, county planning and zoning.
I don't think Steve has a copy of that.
They're seeking, uh, the most current zoning map and future land use map. This is St. Clair County, by the way. I got my commentary.
That's right.
The most recent.
Little distance.
Yeah, little distance. The most recent versions of your master plan zoning ordinance and parks and, you know, I don't know. Wanted to run that by you, um, because within our five-year development program right now, obviously we can't sell them, I think, because we're not done with them. So, do we just send them what we have at this point?
Send us our old master plan and our old zoning map.
Okay, that's all we can do. And just make note that we're in our five-year program.
Exactly. I was in the same shape. They're just sending their old one from five years ago, but they know where we're currently being.
Got you. Joe, you're okay with that? Alrighty, thank you, sir. And then the, the sixty-four thousand dollar question, Steve, is, is obviously the renewable energy of Michigan. And one of the things that just tickles my fancy, I guess, is when we get into the solar energy thing, and we all have our small, medium, and large solar energy developments. And in looking again at our zoning maps and what we're trying to do, I guess my concern is, or I wanted to run this by the group, the, what if we were to limit the large solar energy plants? Let me rephrase it. Um, in the ag zoning, they would not be allowed at all. The only place for them is industrial, is the special land use. That would be, that would be what I'd like to see. And I wanted to run that by the group.
According to the new law that was passed, you can't do that.
Yeah, we have no seats on there, right?
You can't do that.
Why can't we do it?
Because they're saying it's allowed anywhere. It meets their public service commissions and regulations, which haven't been adopted yet. So, if this referendum comes through, then you can adopt your own ordinance. But right now, no, cannot do that.
So, if we, we can't even change our zoning ordinance to reflect that, it wouldn't matter?
You can change it in violation of the state law.
Because of the way it's worded, as far as...
No, they're, they're, they took zoning control, citing character control of large-scale solar over from local, so you can't deal with them through zoning.
Yeah, no control.
And it also says you can't place any restrictions on there that are more restrictive than their conditions, which is basically they're allowed anywhere.
There's not really no restrictions, is there?
Right, exactly. That's why communities are so sad. So...
And that's how you petition.
Looking at this petition thing, obviously, you know, we wanna maybe try to do what we can to support this. Have you any experience with something like this?
It's a lot of signatures.
Five hundred and fifty signatures, a lot, but seven to ten million dollars is even more. Raise seven to ten million dollars to ensure quality signature checks, counter legal challenges, and ensure placement on the ballot. I mean, we could get seven signatures all day long, but who's gonna come up with ten million dollars? I mean, we could get signatures all day long, but who's gonna come up with ten million dollars?
You know, those are, the MTA, Michigan Township Association, this municipal league, and those kind of organizations, they're gonna have to probably...
For cash.
Come up with, have to send one to them.
Gotcha. Okay. So, right now, Consumers Power could come in and take their property in, in our township and put solar panels on all their properties, we couldn't do it anyway.
After the first of the year.
After the first of the year.
Unless something changes.
And, and to your point, I'm belaboring the point, Steve, so bear with me, but, um, but nothing in ours, even changing the zoning ordinance wouldn't affect the process at all. Has the county, St. Clair County, do you, are you at your meeting? What, was there anything from the county? Are, are they trying to pull us together on this at all? What, what did you gather from that meeting, or from that?
Well, they're not happy with it. And so there's, I mean, everybody's trying to do whatever they can. Pardon me?
Trying to fight it, I see.
Trying to fight it. Right? Nobody was happy with it.
No. Well, it's just something else they're taking, they've taken away from.
That was a good name. Good speakers.
Okay, awesome. Well, Steve, if you hear something, if you...
Absolutely, I'll keep you informed.
Any, any other questions on that, folks? All right. Anything else?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
This gentleman, can you state your name, please?
It's Dan M L Y N A R E K.
M L?
Y N A R E K.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. Anything else, folks, for the good of the township? Okay? Well, thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. We are in line for a motion to adjourn.
We need to motion to adjourn the meeting of March nineteen twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and congratulations to all of our leaders. We appreciate what you've done, and what we know you're going to do with the town. Thank you.
First, we're gonna do an English stunt.
First point.
Three stunts.
Poncho, that's, that's...